Well, welcome. Tonight, there is a very good feeling. We have four people who want to step up and help our kids. It would be better if it was five, but we have at least four that are willing. So tonight, we're going to meet what I think is the most important position you can choose if you're a parent. And we always look at selectmen as being the most visible. But as I've always said, when high school rolled around, I was lucky to get two hours a night with my daughters because they were off running every direction. We're going to talk to people who are going to sculpt how your kids spend six to eight hours of their day. So think hard about who you want to be setting the vision of what your kids should be doing for 12 years. We'll start with introductions. Oh, Scott, you're first by luck of the draw.
Yeah, ain't I lucky. Well, my name is Scott Vichiola, lifelong Milford resident, born and raised here. I want to serve to help the kids get even better in the special ed. I serve on parish boards now in town.
Let me go through the intros and then we'll get right back so we'll ask you the question I always ask.
Hi, John Erickson, Al. Thank you for having me tonight. Currently serve as building commissioner for the town of Milford, live in Milford naturally, and you know, prior to that ran my business here in Milford.
Scott Harrison, current member as well as chairman of the Milford School Committee. Very pleased to be here. Thanks for inviting us.
Mike Walsh, also a current member and vice chairman of the Milford School Committee.
So you won the draw. First question, always the same as the last. Scott, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Born and raised here. I have a passion for the town. I believe the school committee is the best place to make it even better, help the kids achieve their goals even higher, help the special ed get even more better for that. Stuff like that.
Okay, John, you're up next. Why should I vote for you?
For me, Al, it's a simple answer. I'd like your vote because I care a great deal about this community. I think I can make, you know, the sometimes difficult but unbiased decisions that will really enhance the Milford school system.
Scotty.
Al, so thank you for, again, for having us out here. So why should you vote for me as a person from Milford? Again, I grew up here. I'm a parent. I have two children in the system. So I see every single day what the output is and what the effects on our schools. I can use my experience that I've gained over the last three years. I was born and raised by teachers, so it gives me a unique perspective from a teacher's perspective.
Milford teachers?
Milford teachers, both retired Milford teachers. And I'm a taxpayer in the town as well. So I bring that, all three of those aspects to help support the students, the teachers, the staff, and balance that with the needs of taxpayers.
Michael.
Well, I think for me, Al, the most important reason, I've always heard me call myself a full member. So I'm able to, when I'm in that chair, I'm in that chair. I don't have to leave for any kind of, you know, anybody employed in the system. Like right now, we're negotiating teachers' contracts right now, and you know, there are members that unfortunately can't do that. I sit in that chair from the time we start to the time we finish. I think also my time serving as the chairman of Milford Catholic Elementary School, so I've got a very broad background as far as education goes. And I'm a tireless worker. I mean, I will just keep going until I get the job done, you know? And I want to continue to give back to a community. I say this all the time, a community that's done so much for my family, and I feel I still, I want to serve.
You can't forget the Utes. Poor Sidney will cry if you forget to mention your ties to the youth center.
Yeah, I'm chairman of the Milford Youth Commission as well, yeah.
So we start, first question or second question, as it may be. What do you think the three biggest challenges that the school system faces?
Well, I think the three biggest challenges right now, I think there's certainly more than three, but the first three that come to my mind are certainly, as Mike just mentioned, teacher negotiations, contract negotiations. You know, that's expected to go for the next several months. Technology, it's on the front page, but it really is a big challenge right now. It's been neglected, and it needs some serious improvements. And I don't even think we've, you know, really come to realize exactly what needs to be done. But we all agree that something needs to be done, and I, you know, hope to be a part of tackling that challenge and moving technology forward to where it needs to be. And of course, you know, building and implementing the New Woodland School is one of the largest issues, if not the largest issue.
Scott?
Woodland School is certainly the most, is certainly one of the most immediate. And building through that transition, seeing that through to fruition, and going through the transition of consolidating two middle schools into one with the consolidation of Middle School East into Stacy, transitioning fifth grade from Stacy Middle School into the New Woodland School. So that transition, seeing Woodland through to fruition, seeing what the future for Middle School East and making that decision, it's going to have a large impact, not only on the schools, but certainly on the town. And technology continues to be at the forefront. It's going to be an ongoing process that's going to take very significant and serious decisions to be made. And lastly, certainly our continued focus with English language learning kids. So it's the students that come to Milford that don't speak English in their homes. They don't speak English. They may not speak any words of English at all when they first come in. And continuing to work to, A, educate them, but work to seek support at a state level as well as a national level to help with funding that. I mean, that's a huge growing population that we need to make sure we're supporting our teachers for.
Michael.
I look at it a little bit differently, Al. I think top on the list is the English language learners to me, and everything that's needed to support that program, the tools, the text, everything that goes along with that. So to me, the number one priority that we, John and Scott made reference to, it's a big population of children. It's growing, and we really need to get our arms around it and, you know, work on it. To me, the other one is, I call it school to career. In other words, not every single child coming out of the high school is ready to go to college or wants to go to college. Are we offering programs at the high school level that children can take, like hospitality management, which Dr. Tremblay started, that they can come out of high school and get into the workforce and go down the road? You know, that I think is important and something that needs to be looked at. The third thing to me is looking at people that are choicing into the district but then have to go out of district for services. The cost is enormous, and I think we need to really watch that. That can be a real concern, you know? And you're not allowed to screen them, but you know, somebody comes in and now you realize they need out-of-district services that are, can be very costly. I think that's an issue that we got to watch. Yeah, I think the Woodland School, you know, but I think the Woodland School is, the committee that's, you know, running it, putting it together is doing a great job, you know? And I think it will be fine when it's all done, you know? Yeah, Middle School East, you know, some of us are different on what we're going to do with it, but you know.
A lot of those topics we'll go through individually.
Right, right. So, but that's what I feel.
Al, number one, all the kids that are here that do not speak English, we got to make that top priority. Get them to teach English. There's a lot of kids here that don't. We have to work on that. Number two, I say the school, but you got the building committee up there doing a good job. But you get, once it's all done, then you got to transition all the schools and move the kids around. That's going to be a big piece. And probably number three, the teachers. I like the work, help them get their contract and work on, make sure everything comes smoothly.
Okay, well, we started talking about ELL. And I know there's a lot of confusion because we hear from our representatives in Boston that they are being funded, yet the rumors run around that they're not being funded. So I guess we can either go at two questions. One is, how do you feel the ELL population impacts Milford? And either from a fiscal point of view, which I would think is near and dear to your heart right now, or from a results point of view? Because obviously, one of the things that people always say is Milford's average, when you look at, you know, MCAS or the new park, are always lower than some of the other communities around. So how would you like to take it? You want to take one and then come back?
I'll tell you what, I'll tackle both because I think they're both very intertwined, to be honest with you. When it comes to the finances, it's a significant impact. The challenge that we face is there is, there is funding that is put in place at a state level. It is funded at a rate of 46 cents of every dollar, based on what the projected spending should be. So the state has formulas that says you should spend a dollar to educate this child. Out of that dollar, we're going to give you 46 cents. Now, in Milford, to make sure that we're giving our teachers as well as those students every opportunity to be successful, the actual cost when it comes down to it, because the state's costs are projected, it ends up being at about a dollar ten, for keeping our dollar scenario going. So what we're really getting is, we're getting a 40, we're still getting that 46 cents, but we're getting it on a dollar ten instead of on a dollar. So is it funded? Yes. Is it funded to a level that's going to actually cover the additional cost? No, it's not. I mean, 46 cents of a dollar is not the whole thing. The other piece that goes along with that is the data that the state asks the schools to provide. There's a lag that always goes into that. It's a growing population force, and it's a significantly growing population. At this point, we've seen just since October of 2000, from October of 2013 to October of 2014, we had roughly an additional 70 students register for classes here in Milford that qualify for some level of English language learning. Those students, when you think about the educational, so that's the budget impact. It's significant. You talk about 70 kids. We talk about an average classroom size of approximately 20 kids. It's three and a half classrooms is what it really is. Well, there's teachers that go along with that. Well, the teachers do a phenomenal job. They're working very, very diligently, but they don't work for free. This isn't, you know, this isn't a volunteer job. We've got to make sure that we're giving them benefits. We're paying them, we're paying them the contractual salary that goes along with that. And then there's materials, and we've got spaces, and we've got to make sure we get space for them, and there's, you know, they want heat in the room and electricity, you know, all those nuisance things.
Demanding people, aren't they?
Very demanding, right, very demanding. Then you get into the educational components. These students are coming in, and they may not speak English at all. In fact, many cases, they don't speak English at all, or they've got very, very limited either education and in some cases, limited educational experience as well, meaning that they may be 15 years old or 16 years old, and their last level of documented formal education may only be up to the third grade. So our teachers, we've got to hire teachers that are able to help fill that gap, do it quickly, because if they're, you know, if they're 15 years old, 16 years old, they're coming in the ninth grade, which means they've got to pass an MCAS test, and that's going to be a graduation requirement roughly a year and a half into their tenure here in the schools. Our teachers do a phenomenal job. When the kids come in early, when these students come in early, they're coming in in kindergarten, first and second grade, our teachers do an amazing job. We got a report from Dr. McIntyre, our assistant superintendent of curriculum, saying that our transition of kids is staggering when you start getting in, when the kids come in in first or second grade. By sixth grade, they're virtually out of the, they're, are so proficient that they're on their own. They're out of that program.
I want to get to that specific question, so I'm going to hold you there as a separate question later.
Excellent.
Because there's many of us who were those kids, you know, who didn't know there was this English language? I mean, I grew up and never spoke anything about Portuguese in the house, so you go out of the house and people are speaking this funny new language called English. And there is a lot to be said of how you bring kids through it, but Michael.
To get back to what Scott was talking about, Al, and you brought it up, the confusion between the funded and the unfunded, because I had a long conversation with Representative Fernandez. What happens is, like, right now is we're building our budget. We're budgeting in using the number of children that are presently in the school, and those children will be funded in next year's budget. What happens to us is, like, when the 30 children, or 18, I'm sorry, 18 children came out of Texas to live with relatives or friends in the Milford area, and then they're enrolled in the Milford school system, yes, you could say that those children are not funded because they were not in the formula. But next year, they will be funded because they will be part of the formula. So that kind of hit the street and took on a, kind of a name of its own, but that's really how it works. So we're putting together right now the formula or the, you know, for the state for next year. Last Thursday night, I did go to a meeting in Newton that was supposed to be for the formula, because the formula that the state of Massachusetts is using right now has been around since 1993. It's broken. It doesn't work. They know it doesn't work. And so, you know, they're trying to bring in administrative school committee, selectmen, and say, you know, what do we need to do to take back to Boston to get this thing changed? Because it isn't going to happen overnight. So, you know, it was interesting to sit there and listen to other towns going through the exact same, a lot of towns worse off than we are. The gentleman from Framingham actually had a chart made up and showed Framingham is way off the chart as far as getting any kind of state reimbursement. It's because of how the demographics in the town have changed, you know? So it's a real concern that needs to be looked at, you know?
Well, I saw two different areas that in my mind, we need to better educate our legislators. One is, what does it really cost? You know, using your number, is it a dollar? Or is it really a dollar ten, a dollar thirty?
Right.
Because when they say it's $9,600 for a kid in an average, but if it's ELL, it could be $11,000. And you sit there and say, first of all, is it really? You know, if you're bringing in kids who, I mean, 20 children who don't speak English, it's got to be more demanding than 29th graders that have been in the Milford school system for eight years.
Well, then you got to factor in, how about the child that goes out of district for $80,000 a year?
Well, we'll talk about sped also, because that's a whole different animal. But number one is, okay, is the number correct? You know, is it really a dollar? Or is it a dollar twenty to raise a kid each year? And then, the second part of the formula is, when they look at Milford's income, you know, the taxes, the property values, what can we afford to pay? So when you say 47 cents, that was the number John used with me, okay, there's other towns that get 80 cents. There's some towns that get 15 cents. So you're right, 20 years, 30 years later, if you haven't changed the numbers, they could be totally skewed.
Right.
Scott?
Well, they have to be taught. They're only kids to me. We have to teach them. Like we talked about it before, we have to teach them. And they're only human like everybody, we're all equal. We have to find the money somewhere, and they're like they're saying, the state, it's broken that thing right now. But you got to reach out with Ryan Fatman, our representatives, Fernandez, and Senator Kennedy. Maybe we can find a way, get some money to come in, because all the towns are getting hurt by it. It's tough decisions to make coming up.
John?
Yeah, I think clearly Mike and Scott summed it up very well with all the issues. You know, the finances, that's the biggest obstacle in the school period for every program. You know, to accomplish things, you need money. And they certainly, you know, some of these mandates are challenging. But, you know, that's not a new problem to Milford, not, well, not the financial, but, you know, students coming in that don't speak English. Al, we've talked about this. My mother-in-law came in from Italy at 12 years old, and, you know, that's hundreds and if not thousands in Milford. So I think the teachers are doing a very good job. They're expending a lot of effort with these, these children. And, you know, to your point earlier, these kids are going home to a household that doesn't speak English. They're not getting any help at home with, with schoolwork. So, you know, it's challenging in every aspect.
And a lot of it, you know, you can't blame the parents.
No, but John brings up a valid point, Al, and you as well, is that, you know, when people get concerned about the ELL programs in the schools, well, they forget about what the great town of Milford was founded on. It's been going on in Milford for years. You're an example of it. You know, John just mentioned his mother-in-law. You know, people come to this town from other parts of the world, and we've been dealing with it in the education system even back then.
Well, if you think about it, you know, you talk about the new immigrants from Guatemala, from Ecuador. They're the new Brazilians, who at one point were the new Portuguese, who were the new Italians, who were the new Irish.
Right.
So, you know, you sit there and say, dang, these people, they want to be just like us. Well, thank God, somebody helped my grandfather.
That's right.
Because when he came to Milford, he had $32.80 in his pocket and a vision that he wanted to make it better for his family. So, you know, when I look at the wave coming in, I agree with you. I think Milford's become stronger because of all of, you know, the culture that each group brings.
Yep. I had a conversation the other day with Father Schioli. He was telling me, he remembers being in kindergarten when a new family came from Italy, and the first thing that the community did was help them set up an apartment. And then every child in the school got a note, was there something in their home that they could do away with? And that's how they got that family started. They helped the father get a job. You know, they were here for two reasons, a better way of life and more importantly, to educate their children.
So now, as we look at the scores, because that is a quantifiable number, you know, it's quantitatable, you add up and you say, the average score in Milford is X. Let me ask you all, how do you explain it to people when they say, our scores are lower than other towns around us?
Well, to me, the first issue that I have, Al, is the students keep changing. So what I mean is, you might have a fifth grade this year that academically is very strong, and now you bring in the following year, a new fifth grade class, you know, new students, you know, that may not be as strong academically. So that can, that can affect the score. I asked a question one night at school committee, because we were actually looking at scores, and there were students that did poorly in the reading side of it, okay? But I'm sorry, they did strong, they did weak in the math side of it. And so I asked a question, well, if we were to score their reading scores, or how do they do in reading? And they said, well, they, most of the time, they're a little bit on the weak side. I said, now I go back to the math test. Does it have word problems? And they said, well, of course it does. I said, well, there's your answer. If they're struggling to read, they're going to struggle on the, on the math test, you know? But to me, I think it's preparation, proper preparation. Do you have the right teacher teaching the right subject? You know, as Scott has made reference to, we have phenomenal teachers in this town. I always say to people, if you criticize the Milford public schools, you've never been in the Milford public schools. That's how strong I feel. But in some cases, is the, is the preparation being done properly to bring the scores, you know, up higher? And I, you know, I believe Dr. McIntyre is the guy to do it, and he's really done well.
Scott, scores.
Well, they always could be better, but like John, he, Mike was saying, one year they're good, the next year, the next generation kids come in, they might be a little lower because they struggle. You get the right teachers in the right positions, I believe everybody will be great at the end.
John?
Al, I don't have an answer to that question, but it's, it's a great question. It's one I look to get the answer to or some more, some further insight into it. And, you know, I'll be looking for the educators and the administrators up in the school system to enlighten me, give me their views, and tell me what I can do to help them to, you know, improve the system.
Scott, why aren't your scores better?
Well, what I would say, what I would say is this, I think that as we compare ourselves to school systems with like demographics, there's no question we're leading the pack. Demographics play a big role. When we look at some of our surrounding towns, you know, we talked, you talked about it a little earlier, right? So if, if 95% of your student population all comes from like households that speak the native language, that the majority of the classes are talking, that the, that the subject matter is being tested on, it puts you at a very different position walking into that test than when you have a very, much more diverse population, which we have. And that's a wonderful piece, and I think very deliberate on the, on the part of Milford. It's part of what makes us such a great town is because we are, we are such a, such a huge cultural difference.
The person who put it in best perspective for me was when my oldest hit eighth grade. If you remember Tommy Davern, the quiet and shy principal he was. I remember going up to him saying, Tommy, I hear our scores suck. Why? And he looked at me, he says, because you're illiterate. I said, excuse me? He goes, well, you're uninformed. And I love Tommy, because you always got straight answers. He said, look at the data. And I said, I'd love to see the data, because you're right. All I see is a number. And he showed me a very bimodal distribution. He said, if you compare the kids who've gone through our school system from day one and to other towns, we're very favorable. But you have kids who, like you said, Mike, I came in, I got a year to learn English, to catch up on six years worth of education, and I'm tested. That distribution was much lower. When you homogenize it, when you put it all together, the average number didn't look very good.
Well, the other thing too, Al, a lot of people forget about is, living in Massachusetts, we're living in academia. I mean, so we're, we're held to a whole different, you know, esteem. Because if you could see the scores in other parts of the country, they're, they're very poor. But because we're in Massachusetts and the educational foundation is so strong in Massachusetts, we're held to a different, you know, a different level.
Now, start with a question then. Milford school systems, are they good systems? Are they providing a good education for the kids?
Yes, they are. They're very good. They're good sports, all-around sports is good, good academic, all that stuff. They got the science thing, they're doing the robotics, they're coming in now, it looks good, I'd like to see more of that. I believe they're doing very well.
How do you, what do you base your judgment on?
I see, I look at stuff on, I see everything on social media, but I see how, I watch the meetings, I see how everything works. I like the sports program, we always have good teams. They learn good, the kids that are here. The ones that leave, well, hey, some, it's there, right, if they want to go somewhere else.
John, do we have a good school system? And what do you base your opinion on?
We do, Al. I've said in the past, I'm not a, you know, big proponent of standardized test scores, which we all know is, you know, sort of a necessary evil, if you will. But I base it on the results, you know, where, where these seniors are getting into colleges and where they're choosing to go. They're getting into some of the top or the top colleges in the country. You know, I have the list from the last few years, and I'm just astonished at how, you know, the caliber of schools that the large numbers are getting into, not one or two, but, you know, in volume.
I'll take our schools and compare them to any school in the country, any schools in the state, to your point. When it comes to, as John mentioned, when it comes to where the kids are moving on into college, where the, the schools that they're being, not just applying to, but being accepted to and attending and having great success after college. The jobs that our students go into, so for those that are not college-bound, that they go into and find great careers and come back and become homeowners and residents of the town, which is, which is what we want. So do we have, do we have great schools? Yes, I do. I believe we have great schools. Now, that being said, as you and I have talked about in the past, Al, I'm somebody who believes in continuous improvement, so there's, good is never good enough. I always want more. I want more for our kids. I truly am, you know, call me an idealist, I believe in the American dream. I want my children to have more than I did. I want them to be better off than I was. And I want that not just for my children that I raise at my house, I want that for the 40, what I call my other children, which is the 4,400 that attend our schools every single day.
Mike, do we have good schools? And what do you base your opinion on?
You hear me say all the time, I just said it earlier in the show, if you criticize the Milford schools, you've never been in them. I give you examples. Every couple of months, we try to tour on a Friday at a particular school. I was at the Memorial School, and a teacher said, I'd like to introduce you to a little girl. So I walked over and introduced myself to her, and she spoke to me and, back to me in English. And the teacher looked at me and she said, two years ago, she didn't, couldn't speak a word of English. Results, okay? That girl was already in this country, less than two years, speaking and writing English. Great. When Dr. Tremblay appointed Carrie Bonner as the new principal of the high school, got a standing ovation.
And rightfully so from experience.
Yeah, I called him up and I said, I'm really jealous. He says, what are you jealous about? I said, I'm jealous of you as a manager. I said, because the goal of every great manager is to surround himself or herself with people that have the same vision and share the same views, and you just put the final piece in the puzzle. You know, again, he's a leader, you know? I look at the arts programs, you know, if you go to the plays, you know, go to the concerts, I look at the arts programs, you know, if you go to the plays, you know, go to the concerts, you know? Every year it's senior night, they bring in the string quartet that plays in the, but now we've got it going on at the Woodland School, you know? I had a gentleman come in the dealership to see me, he just retired from private sector and decided he wanted to do something, he wanted to become a substitute. He came to tell me that he couldn't believe the number of classes, programs that are offered at Milford High School for these children. And his words exactly were, if the children coming out of Milford High School are not ready, it's not the high school, it's not the administration, it's not the teachers' fault. He said, because what gets offered at that school is absolutely amazing. So to answer your question, good school system, great school system.
So I guess, next question's to you. Mike brought up a point that is being talked about more and more. When we grew up, if you were going to college, you went to Milford High or St. Mary's. It's pretty simple. If you weren't, you went to BVT to learn a trade. Today, and I always bring up my father, because I always say the most educated, uneducated man I knew. He didn't have a lot of academic experience. He really didn't shine if you handed him a book. But he was an artist with any tool you gave him. You know, and he spent time to teach me the value of a person. So to me, that was the education. Somebody like him going through Milford when we were kids would have gone to BVT and learned how to be a carpenter, a plumber, an electrician. Today, to get into BVT, you almost have to be in the top ten percent of the class. So people like my father, who are good citizens, good craftsmen, what are we going to do for them? Because they can't get to BVT, probably won't go to college. Any ideas what you do with people like that?
Well, I seriously, I think the exposure to the trades that the Milford students have has been extremely limited, as you said. It's difficult to get into Blackstone Valley, and the ones that get in, a large percent of them aren't going into the trades even though they're in the high school trade program, they're going on to college. So I'd like to give our students more exposure to the trades. There is a program in place that gives them, you know, an opportunity to do like a co-op with, you know, a trade company, HVAC, electrical, any of the trades, but I'd like to give them a lot more exposure to that. I don't know if it could ever be accomplished, but I'd actually like to see trade programs come to Milford High School. Big challenge financially, getting the money for a program like that, but I'd at least like to explore the opportunity of doing it. But if not, increase the exposure and the opportunity to, for them to get some hands-on training for the student that's not going to go on to college, the student that's going to enter the workforce. You know, growing up, my father ran a business, most of his employees came from Blackstone Valley. Today, that's just not the case. Your tradesmen now are the kids that went to college and it really wasn't for them in the first place and, you know, they they spent some time that could have been spent better elsewhere, you know, with a different career path.
So what do you do?
What do you do? The program's already in place to, you know, give them the cooperative education, there's a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know, I don't know how you continue that, but that's something I want to pursue. Obviously, keep that program going, reach out to businesses and let them know that that's available to students and see if they have any interest. I know a number of small business owners that would potentially take on a student like that.
Scotty, I'm not going to thrive in academia, I want to be a craftsman and earn a good living. What are you going to do for me?
So I think one of the things that, as John was talking about with our partnership with Blackstone Valley Tech. I'll be honest with you, I'm disappointed, to be honest with you, about, I think it's a school that's done amazing things. I think it's incredible what has emerged from that school. However, I'm disappointed because the students in the original charter and what that school was designed for is exactly for the students you just described. And you're absolutely right, unfortunately, it's been, it's been sort of, you know, tongue-in-cheek nicknamed Blackstone Valley Academy. Because trying to get in there is more difficult than some of our, some private schools are. I'd really like to see a return to that from Blackstone Valley. You know, I would like to see, what I love to see is how we've started really becoming creative within the schools. Things, as an example, with the hospitality program. That really gives our students and gives these, gives these children just a great exposure to really everything. Part of that program as that goes through is, they see everything that goes on in a hotel. From building maintenance to cleaning rooms to reservations to sales to management to front-end, everything, soup to nuts. And then they have all the accreditations with the Hilton organization that they can take across the world. The more creative we can be to be able to expose some of these, exposing children to those opportunities, I'm all for. I'd love to tell you that we're going to get an electrical program at Milford High School. Unfortunately, Ed reform in nineteen ninety-three did away with that, you're not allowed to have vocational programs like that at public schools anymore. It's actually illegal. But can we find creative ways to still be able to give exposure to our students? Yes, we are currently, and I think we need to continue to invest in that going forward.
Michael, you're right in the middle of it.
Well, one of the major concerns, and Scott made reference to it, Al, is that in the state funding, if, say tomorrow, Milford High School, we wanted to open up an automotive program, we can't do it. Because our funding coming from the state says that we have a vocational school in our backyard that offers those kind of programs, we have to stay away from them. That's why when Dr. Tremblay designed the hospitality management, he did it in such a way that he stayed, you know, enough.
He didn't overlap with BVT.
Exactly, so that's one of the issues that John makes reference to. We'd love to, if we could, you know, open up, you know, electrical shop, you know, a trade, some kind of a trade. But the problem is, is when you have a school, you know, as close as Blackstone Valley that offers those programs, Scott made reference to, we can't. It's in our funding and it's illegal to do. So we need to work on finding programs that we can offer. Like the next one that Dr. Tremblay's talking about now is some kind of a banking program where, and he's actually showed me last year, he has a spot upstairs at the high school where he would like to partner with one of the banks in town to see if they would open up a branch and the kids could man the branch and, you know, start learning the banking industry, so that's another one. He's had long conversations with me, because a lot of people forget about the automobile industry, it only, it has a marketing side, it has an accounting side, and it has a technical side. And the accounting side is the one, as well as the technical side, that we struggle to find good help. So could we take these young people and offer them courses in, you know, basically how to work in an office? And, you know, how to proper, you know, properly answer.
How to support the mechanics that you already have.
Right, or, you know, support staff in the buildings. But I mean, just as an example, in our accounting office, between the main office and the three dealerships, there's got to be, there's got to be twenty employees. You know, so it's another avenue, could a young person, you know, come in after school, almost work like a co-op? But it's another, it's another avenue for the child to go to work after high school that maybe either A, isn't ready to go to college, or just doesn't want to go to college. And people have to remember too, they may not go for four or five years, but they may change their mind and go back to night school. But, you know, that, those are the kind of programs that we're looking to do.
Scott?
Well, we got the hospitality program working, working very well. I believe Bob is doing a lot of good up there, getting programs. You got to find in the budget to find other programs to do, but I think we can find stuff for the kids. Because you can't do everything like they're saying, because it's right down the road, Blackstone Valley Tech.
Scotty, today, too much money and not enough to spend it on? How are you going to approach a budget that, I mean, the FinCom has come out and said, we believe as a town, that we can afford to let salaries go up two percent and expenses be flat. And part of the rationale is, we always know there's special issues that we have to deal with, that are out of your control. How are you going to approach too much money and not enough to spend it on?
It's, it's not a problem we have, I can tell you that. That being said.
And not gonna have.
Yeah, we're not likely to have, and quite frankly, it's not a problem, quite frankly, that I, that I would feel real good about having. And the reason why, and I, and it may sound a little odd coming from a school committee member, that being said, that money has a person on the other side of it. And that person, in large part, are our friends and neighbors that are taxpayers in the town of Milford. So too much money would mean that we're overtaxing, which I have a foundational and fundamental problem with. That being said, because I know that's not your question, what do we do? We've got to continue to balance to make sure that we are not just throwing quarters around like manhole covers, but pounding every penny into copper wire at this point. Really making sure that every dollar is put to the best use. Making sure that we're putting as many frontline teachers in front of students that we possibly can. Finding different ways to be more efficient, as an example, with leveraging of technology. One of the proposals that we're working on right now with the town is, how do we more centralize, how do we more centrally manage the technology improvements that need to be done in the schools, but also across the town? How do we continue to leverage grant programs? To be able to help support additional different initiatives, such as the hospitality program. And then when the time comes and we have to make difficult decisions, and we've had to make them in the past, really working very closely with the building administration. Listen, I'm, you know, I was raised by two retired school teachers, I am not a school teacher, I'm not an educator. And with the exception of one of our members, that's not our, that none of us are. And quite frankly, as a school committee, that's not really our role. Our role is to understand and really be connected with the town. Understanding what the needs of the taxpayers, as well as what the needs of the students and the teachers are, and then make decisions based on information. We've need, we have in the past, we've changed our budget process from working rather than top-down of us who don't have education backgrounds telling them, we're going to spend dollars here and there, to really working closely with the teachers and letting the teachers' voices be heard and tell us where they think the money's best spent. Through the administrators, we've created a position called a curriculum team leader, which is really, for lack of a better term, it's a peer within the teacher group, within each grade, as well as each subject, to really be that voice of that group. To come up and say, we think we should spend money here, we think we can, we can pull resources together. Hey, you've got six math books, but you've only got five students, I've got, I've got four math books, but only, but I've got five students, can I borrow one? And how do we make better use of those, that's some of the efficiency that I was talking about.
So Mike, we're going into a budget, we know a two percent increase and a flat expense increase is a cut. How do you approach that?
It's very difficult, and I'm going to give you an example of it, Al, because at the meeting the other night, I actually spoke to Senator Jamie Aldridge. And I said, you know, one of the hardest things as a school committee member is, right now, we're putting together our two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. We have our finance committee in our town telling us they want us in before them in April with the number. I said, but we're not going to know your number until sometime in June. So I says, it's like throwing darts on a wall. I said, we're doing the best job that we can, we've got the finance committee telling us two percent flat here. Okay, so we're building towards that, but we don't even know what your number is. If the state could come out, and this is what I said to them, even if you could say, figure you're going to get ten to twelve million dollars, just give us a number that we can play with, because we don't know. So now we bring this package to the FinCom and your number comes out five hundred thousand dollars less, we got a real serious problem, you know? And that's the first thing that needs to be looked at, so that when we're building the budget together, okay, it's coming into town meeting in May, accurate. You know, so that we don't have to go through major cuts. But we know, we know we're going to have some cutting, we're going to try to make it as minimal as possible. But you got to make sure that if you do cut, you got to stop and think what you're cutting. You know, where does it fall in the priority? You know, can you shift something around, instead of offering an intramural sport five days a week, could you do it three days a week? You know, can you shift a class around, you know, you just got to, you really got to do some forward thinking.
Scott, how would you approach the budget?
Well, right now, you really don't know, because everybody doesn't know, but you have to find something, you might have to make a tough decision. Sometimes you have to, that's part of the business you're getting yourself into. But you got to make sure the kids have what they need, and the teachers, and the taxpayers, the vendors, they're the ones that are giving the money. But at the end of the day, you might have to cut something here and there, but it'd be tough.
Michael, simple words, middle school east.
You know where I stand on that.
I don't have to have a big preamble.
No, I just think that, and I appreciate the committee that's looking at it, but when I look around the town of Milford and I see the lack of space at town hall, I see the giant lack of gym space. I say, before the school committee turns the key back over to the town, we have to make sure that there is no way that we have any use for that building, because you know, once we give it back, we're not getting it back, you know? And so that's why I say, I think we just, there's a lot of space issues in this town, and maybe it might take a little bit of money to make it work, but could we make it work and keep the space for the town, you know? And again, but not to be repetitive, downstairs at town hall, John knows John works there. I mean, you know, ask Lenny Marcone, they're fighting for gyms all the time, and yeah, is the youth center going to help? It's going to help, but we're still short gym space, you know? Could you move, could you move the administration building down there and get it out of the high school? You know, a lot of different things you could do with that building. The committee comes back and says, no, well then.
Well, I mean, I think there's some misinformation that the school committee just walks over and says, here's the keys, they're yours.
Yeah.
Because even if you turned over the building and the town ran it, you're still paying sixty-one percent of the cost. Because that would come out of the top, you know, when you think about it, you get about sixty-one percent of the money left over. So if we get a hundred dollars in, we pay our health benefits, we pay our mortgages, you know, essentially the bonds, and you get sixty-one percent of what's left. So one way or another, if I take ten dollars off the top, well, that's six point one dollars you're not getting.
Correct.
So the school system is going to be part of the decision and affect it. Middle school east, any thoughts?
Well, the gym, I would like to see the youth center have it, because they need the gym space. If you can move the administration offices from the high school down there, that'd be one way, but you got to find the park, and there's not much park in there. If you can keep it in the town, it'd be nice, but the final say, the committee has the final say what they're going to do with it. But it'd be nice though, you can free up the offices at the high school, give them more classroom space. That's what I would look at, even town hall.
Well, when you think about that high school, first class left there in seventy-four. I don't remember any space being really added to that building in forty-one years. So realistically, you know, moving central office out is a very good thing if you want to add some space for programs.
Well, the other thing too, another good reason is, do you really want your central office attached to your high school? So that when your, people from central office are coming out of the office, just to say the superintendent's with another superintendent, and they come out into, when the classes are changing, you know? Is that really the atmosphere that you want for your central office?
You know, it's funny, the comments I've heard more revolve around Lenny. Lenny Marcone's built such a successful program, people want to interface with them during the day.
Right.
Now, I don't think any parent would want us to water down security at the high school, you know?
And that's really been what I've seen, I have the, good fortune, I'm on the middle school reuse committee. I'm jumping ahead of you, I apologize. But I'm actually on the middle school reuse committee, I'm the one who's, has the opportunity to represent the schools along with Bob and Lenny. I mean, there's, we really, it's for, when we think about from a school population, on a relatively small committee, we actually have three voices at the table, because we've got Dr. Tremblay, we've got a school committee member and myself, and we have Lenny Marcone is there as well. So there's already three members right there at the table. Yeah, I mean, right now, if somebody wants to go in and see community use, they can't get in during the day because that place is locked down like Fort Knox.
Thank God it is.
Right, thank God, it needs to be, but for the safety and security of our students and for our, and for our staff. But I would love to see, that's a huge, huge piece, that's a lot of what's been talked about, quite frankly. I think there's also a misconception of, it's got to be an all or nothing, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. Personally, what would I like to see? Yeah, I mean, we're, I've walked in the town hall, I've walked in the John's office, I've walked in, I mean, they're climbing over each other. You get three people in an office the size of a closet, and they're in the basement.
Bunk desks.
Yes, bunk desks, yeah, don't get comfy, you're just the first layer, you know? So it's, I would love to see us be able to use it for that piece, so I think there's a lot of pieces.
John, middle school east.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with most of, if not all of what Mike and Scott have said, the gyms, the gyms are, you know, a big benefit to the community. Moving administration down there, facilities possibly, community use. And, you know, to share it with the rest of the town, with the town offices, I know that, you know, Board of Health would accomplish a lot more if they had more space, you know? Paul Mazakelli has clinics he'd run if he had the, you know, the resources to do so. I know that we have town departments, accounting, and several others that are paying for off-site storage of documents. So there's a lot of factors there. The possibility of renting out a portion of it, a portion of it is enticing, if we can offset some of the operating costs. But that's a big decision, and one that we're going to have to, you know, work to very diligently to come up with what we think is the best, the best use of it.
Maintaining that gym is going to be critical for the town, and the piece that people got to remember is, is it seventy-one? And the piece that people have got to remember is, it's seventy-one thousand square feet. That's a lot of space. So yeah, there's a lot of offices that could be done there. And to your point, if we can, you know, create some conference rooms upstairs, let a local attorney office go do closings up there and generate some additional revenue, great.
Scott, something that's always been perplexing. We're going into negotiation with the teachers, or when we just do our budgets. You read about how the school committees are at war with their mayors, with their finance committees, with their selectmen in many towns around us. Year after year, somebody goes to war. Year after year, I've never seen that in Milford. Why?
Why? I think because they're all work together as a good team. That's how you get stuff done. If you get on the same page, you get the stuff done. I, I have seen that all over. They're fighting all the time, striking, like, just get together and work it out. That's how it works.
John, why does the school committee in Milford seem to work so well with the town?
Well, I think we, we all share the same common goal, and that should be the case in every town, but it's not. We have a bunch of individuals here that, for the most part, keep their egos in check and, and work for the, for the benefit of the school. I mean, for the entire community, not just the schools. You know, there's, I wouldn't say that it's all loves and hugs with finance committee and, and school committee. But, you know, we all have a common goal and, and, you know, at the end of the day, we get there. But it's, it's, it's for the good of the community and there's a lot of hard work that goes into, into it from both sides.
Scott, loves and hugs.
Loves and hugs. I'll invite you to our meeting in two weeks. You know, what I would say is, I, I think, you know, to some of the points that were made earlier, I think that there's a lot of trust that goes along because of the relationships that are built. You know, everybody is here, they're all working towards a common goal. The folks that occupy these boards, they're, they live here. They, they are either currently raising or they were, they themselves were raised here. There is those, there are those relationships that are already currently built. There's a level of trust that says, we're not going to give away the barn, but we're not going to give away the farm here. We're not going to just give things away. We're going to really make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck for everyone involved and that we're sharpening our pencil to try and get there and do the right thing for everybody. And when the times have been good, everyone has been able to benefit from that. And when times have been tough, everybody's been willing to sacrifice. And I think that builds a lot of trust right off the bat.
Michael?
For me, it's very simple. Finance committee comes out of their office. And what I mean by that is, they, you break yourselves apart and you become subcommittees of our committees. Using Will as an example at the youth center. Using Phil C.R.MacCully, Mark Shane, you know, that worked with the school. So we have these subcommittee meetings long before, you know, we're coming in with the final number and we have, we have open conversation. We need this, we can probably put this a year down the road, and we're getting input from the finance committee. So to me, that's the most important part. That's what stops the, you know, the anger and, you know, this is, you know, what you're going to do. Because we have open conversation, very simple. We sit in a room, we say, here we go. This is where we got to be, how are we going to get there? And it's by two boards working together. And that's what makes Milford so successful, is if you look around town, at every single board, that's what they do. That's what they do.
And I'll never forget, when we were all strapped, I read in the paper how many towns around us, their teachers were deferring their raises. Which I never understood, if I can't afford to pay my mortgage this month, how the heck next month am I going to pay twice? Our teachers gave up their raises to keep what was best for the kids in place.
That was my first year on, the contract.
I mean, that's a pretty amazing, you, you don't negotiate that with a union. Okay, the union's got to sit there and say, I'm willing to think long-term and invest in my town. Because otherwise, can you imagine going to a union saying, zero? Even though contractually, you can fight for this, we're asking you to take zero. You couldn't ask if the union didn't offer.
I'll give you one better than that, Al. If you remember that year, that was when we had the situation with a high school football coach, who is also a phys ed teacher at the high school, because of bargaining rights, possibly could have get bumped and would have ended up at the Woodland School. And now the big thing was, oh my, how can you have your high school football coach being a phys ed teacher? But the teachers worked so well together that they were able to work it out amongst themselves. He stayed there and they, they took, you know, that's communication, again, that's what it goes back to.
Okay, John, one minute. I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
It's that time already, huh? I think you should vote for me, again, like I said in the beginning, because I care a great deal about this community. A lot of tough decisions need to be made. I can, again, make them justly and unbiased. I think I'm rational and I've got the education, the technical background behind me to understand a lot of the issues. And I'll just work hard and do my best for the town of Milford.
Scotty, why should I vote for you?
I was raised in this town. I was, I graduated from Milford High School, as did, as did my wife. I was raised by teachers, so I understand, I have a, a good connection and understanding of what teachers work through every single day. I'm a parent who's got children in the school systems and I'm a taxpayer. So I'll use the experience I've gained over the last three years to continue to help move the school system forward.
Michael, why should I vote for you?
I go back to the very beginning, Al, when I say I'm a full member. You vote for me, the guy that goes into that room is going to be in that room. He is not going to have to leave that room for any conflict of interest concerns. So I'll be there representing you, the taxpayer, on every issue that comes up. I think my experience, I've been a school committee member now for six years. I've chaired multiple committees. I'm presently, you know, vice chairman, you know, with Scott. I have a keen knowledge of, of what's going on. I'm in my third round of contract negotiations with the teachers. You know, again, I have the most experience in the room. And, you know, I'm just a, I'm a level-headed, hard-working type of guy.
Scott?
I'll give a one-hundred percent on bond and raise here. I'll give a hundred percent for the school system. Fair, right down the middle. I don't have to go anywhere, contracts, anything. I'll look at everything fair and balanced, across the board. And it's all for the taxpayers, you've got to work for them. They're the ones that vote you in.
And as always, I applaud all four of these gentlemen. Anybody who'll stand up and help our kids deserves our thanks and our respect. Only three will advance. Get to know the four of them. Whether you watch this show for five minutes, ten minutes, get a flavor for who you believe, especially as a parent, will spend their time sculpting the vision on how your children spend six to eight hours a day. There is no more important decision you'll make in my mind as far as elections go. Get out and vote. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific person, but I'll beg you. Get out and vote and let your voice be heard. And as always, thank you for everything you've done in all your positions.
Thank you.
And to the six to eight loyal viewers, because I hear we're up to eight, I want to say thanks for watching. May God bless and may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.